Thank you very much. So calling to order the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting for Ashford for November thirteenth, two thousand twenty-three at seven P M. So we are called to order. First order of business, I'd like to welcome um the new members to the board after the biennial election. And those congratulate those that were successful in their election bids. So again, welcoming back to the board, uh new to us, uh semi-new, uh Tom Hastings, after a stint like a uh Las Vegas entertainer for a couple of years with planning uh planning of zoning Board of Appeals. So Tom, congratulations and welcome um back to the board. Uh and then also as a alternate, uh Steve Pesh uh joining us. And again, we're very, very thankful for your service and appreciate you uh coming to the board and working with us. And congratulations going out to Luther, now a full member up from alternate. Janet Bellamy, another new term. And Doug uh continuing with us as an alternate. So uh thank you again for your service and we really appreciate you being on here and expect to do a lot of great things with uh people on the board. And at this time, uh we have a full complement of members here. So Doug and Steve um and more so for Steve. I know Doug understands this. Steve, normally uh we don't have um deliberations by the alternates on the board. Uh it's only if you're only if you're seated as a member. So but you are, it's kind of like an alternate juror type of thing. If someone has were to step out, you're listening in. And obviously, your feedback um is important to us. So uh you know, thank you for paying attention. And uh obviously, you and uh you and Doug would be voting on any of the motions tonight. And one more quick thing is I would like to take, though you all are being very silent right now, I'd like to take a moment of silence to remember a former longstanding member of Planning and Zoning and a former chair, Sid Oregon, uh who passed away a couple of weeks ago. Again, he uh served a number of years on planning and zoning as both a member and as a chair. So I'll take a a moment to remember him and his service. Okay, very good. Thank you very much. So we're moving on to the item two, approval of minutes from October tenth, two thousand twenty-three. Is there any uh discussion, changes or concerns regarding the minutes? Hearing none. Is there a motion to approve the minutes?
Motion to approve.
Richard got in there just ahead, Richard, two second. All those in favor of approving the minutes from October tenth? Say aye. All those opposed? And abstentions. And in this case, Tom, I think you would need to be an abstention because you weren't in on the meeting for last time. Okay, uh public comment. We are open for a public comment at this point, anyone attending uh as a visitor. And making sure I'm not missing any electronic hands or other hands waving at me. I think we are good. Okay, moving on to bills. This is uh probably from Mike. Uh we have a bill from the Chronicle for our hearings.
Yep, that's from the previous special permit applications and the notice of decision.
Okay, very good. Thank you. Uh correspondence. Uh we do have something that Mike had provided, which is a something we talked about. I think we mentioned it before. Commissioner training opportunity. Um just to look the new members and the any members who have not, as of this point, I think there's only a couple. This would meet part of the requirement for uh land use commission members. Uh and uh in this case, it is a onsite, in-person training at uh Putnam. I think I've got the flyer here somewhere. At least I did at one point. There we go. Whoops. And I will share my screen in just a second. Screen. There we go. There we go. And where did we go here? Here and we went here. Can everyone see my screen?
Yes, yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, so this is, there's approximately four to four and a half hours of training that is it's still not a fully decided issue as to how much training, but these courses meet the bare requirements for land use commissioners. So this is taking place on November twenty-ninth up in Putnam at their municipal complex. Uh this is kind of a basic training. It kind of goes along with the training from CLEAR that many of us have taken, uh which is uh uh legal requirements and actions, uh running a meeting and making a decision and fair and affordable housing update. So that's a total of about four uh four hours, I believe, maybe four and a half hours of training. And the new members will need to complete that sometime during twenty-four, before twenty-five, I believe. Mike, is that correct?
Yeah, within the first year.
Correct, okay. And uh again, there are a couple of members who did get back to me from the last time we brought this up and brought me, told me they would be taking the uh instruction prior to the end of the year. Also, and I think I no, I didn't copy it on this one. Let me see if I can find it here. Uh so again, it's six thirty to eight P M, November twenty-ninth, Putnam Municipal Complex, uh and in-person training. Uh we also have available to us, if I can find that. And I'm not able to right now. What I will do is find the, uh I think if I go down here. Yeah, here we go. Uh this is an advanced training and there are three modules that are recorded. You can use these for video training also that qualify. And that comes under the CLEAR Yukon. And what I will do is I will find the website that I had for everyone and send that. There it is right there. I'm sorry. But I will get this sent out. This is the website, the HTTPS CLEAR YUCON ED at land use office, uh land use uh advanced training. And we'll get that out to you too, so you can use that kind of training. They're approximately an hour to maybe two hours uh in total, about about ninety minutes or so uh plus questions. And it goes, those are recorded sessions. You can do them at your own speed, stop it, go forward, go back, whatever. It's kind of better than the live stuff. It goes a little fast with the live stuff. Luther, you had a question?
Yeah, Jeff, you you mentioned new members needing to be compliant. Just to clarify that, so those of us that were either change of appointment or re-elected, but have completed the training previously, are we okay or do we need to do the training again?
No, you're okay. You don't have to re, you don't have to redo the training because you have that training in your background uh already. The required amount of training. You're good. Thank you.
Thanks.
Jeff, I have a question. Is this uh they're gonna take attendance at these somehow or just the honors?
Well, obviously, the live session would be uh they would they would provide us with the attendance and a completion certificate. Um the other is really a honor system of uh taking the training. Uh again, not very difficult, very easy to go through. And uh again, probably about do it about ninety minutes at a time for the three classes you're pretty here, pretty much covered. And we do need, and once you've completed that, we do need you to report back to either myself, Mike, or the uh who will be whoever will be the recording secretary uh that you've completed the training. Mark, you have a question?
Yeah, I also saw on the information that Mike posted that there's training on uh December ninth in Middlesex.
Oh, I must have missed that. Thank you very much.
And that's that's an in-person training.
Was that a part of a previous or was that part of this?
It's posted on tonight's information folder.
Okay, all right, very good. So I didn't pull that from there. I pulled it from something else. Thank you. There are a couple of opportunities. I know everyone gets busy toward the holidays and stuff, but uh we do need a couple of people to finish off. And um again, you've got time, but the more, the sooner you do this, the sooner uh especially with the way they change the regs back and forth as to what the requirement is, the sooner you get this done, the sooner we're compliant and we don't have to worry about it later. So thank you for your attention on that. Uh not seeing any other questions. Moving on, no public hearing tonight. And currently, no unfinished business on this. We do have a business we need to work on. Or do we do this, which is good? Now we come to the election of officers per our uh bylaws following the biennial elections. We will nominate and vote on new officers uh the uh senior board for the planning and zoning. Uh those positions are uh secretary slash clerk, vice chair and chair. So uh I'd like to start with the uh secretary clerk position. Are there nominations for the secretary clerk position?
I'll nominate Mark Schubel.
I will second that. This is Luther.
Luther, thank you. Are there any other nominations? Hearing none, I look to uh motion to close nominations. Janet, Jerry, you second?
Good.
Okay, all those in favor of Mark as uh secretary clerk? All those opposed? Mark, can I ask if you've accepted?
Yeah, I'll abstain and I accept. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So that's a eight to one. Eight to zero to one, zero to one. Okay. The next position is for vice chair. Are there nominations for vice chair?
I'll nominate Janet Bellamy.
That was Nord?
Nord, yes, seconded.
Nord seconded. Any other nominations? Can I have a motion for closing nominations?
Motion to close, Mark Schubel.
Mark. I'll second that, uh Jeff.
Jeff Schulinger, second. All those in favor of uh Janet Bellamy as vice chair signify by saying aye. Abstentions. Janet, do you accept your nomination and election?
Yes, thank you.
And the last is for nominations for chairman of planning and zoning. I open up nominations.
And I'm a Jeff.
I'll second.
That was Mark and Janet at Valerie. Are there any other nominations? Please, please, please.
A nominee, I I moved to close nominations.
To close. Is there a second to close?
I'll second.
All those in favor of uh Jeff Silversmith as chair of planning and zoning, say aye. Hate you all. Um all those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. Thank you.
Thank you, Jeff.
Thank you, Janet. Thank you, Mark. I have one other quick uh action. It goes right along with the election of officers is um I have an email here. We find ourselves short one alternate because there was no uh minority representation during the election for the final alternate position. Uh I have an email here. After thinking over the possibility to fill the Ashford PCC alternate position, I asked to be appointed to that position. That is coming from Alex Hasillo. Asking to uh be appointed as the alternate for the two-year stint. He is unaffiliated. So he should qualify under minority representation. And what we would need to do is uh vote on this. And uh if it goes forward, then take our motion and send it on to the selectmen for uh selection of Alex. So
Excuse me, uh how do you spell his last name?
H A S T I L L O.
Oh, Alex Hasillo?
Yes.
I thought you said Alex Zillam.
No, no, I'm sorry. I'm sorry. I'll try and speak more clearly, Valerie. I'm sorry.
Okay. All right.
I figured it was gonna click on for you, but I didn't realize I had some poor pronunciation. So uh Alex has thrown his hat in the ring. I don't know if there's anyone else that uh has communicated. I haven't seen anything. And this would give us a full compliment on the board. Plus, what I really like about the idea is uh Mark can get some on-the-job training for what it means to be uh secretary and Alex can help him out with that. Obviously, Mark being a full member, Alex uh not being able to serve on the secretary is being an alternate member. So is there a motion to approve Alex? Jerry, motion to approve, second it?
I'll second.
Tom Hastings, second it? All those in favor? By saying aye, thank you. All those opposed? Abstentions? So moved. All right, so I will send this on to the selectman's office, uh submitting Alex's name and have them uh hopefully do that approval. Thank you very much. Okay, little bit more meat here. Um moving to item B, zoning regulation updates and a potential survey. I had approached, I sent out an email and I had approached a couple of the commissions. I know I sat in on uh economic development and also the Conservation Commission, uh asking them for their input regarding the uh interstate interchange development zone on what people would want to see there. They uh Loretta, and I sent something kind of late because Mike and I were discussing how to get this across to you. Uh Mike, do you wanna share the survey monkey that you had put together uh regarding the zone?
Yep, I can do that.
And of course, share your thoughts behind this.
So, okay. I I mean, I can read it if just to make sure everybody's on the same page. It says Ashford's Planning and Zoning Commission adopted a temporary moratorium on certain developments, the I I D shown in blue below. This moratorium was adopted, uh I need to fix that by the commission, so the commission could carefully consider the current regulations and gather feedback from the community about what changes should be made, if any. The purpose of this process is to ensure that the regulations strike the appropriate balance between economic development slash growth and conservation slash preservation of natural resources. This survey is focused solely on the area depicted below, which is adjacent to the Ashford, to Ashford Motel Road, Route eighty-nine and Interstate eighty-four. So I've included um just an old, an aerial overlay of the uh I I D zone with the road names. I've asked them to indicate their relationship to Ashford, whether it be resident-only, business owner-only, resident and business owner, resident of nearby town or other. And then I've asked them uh based upon the uses currently permitted uh within the regulations to rank the appropriateness. So I've got uh appro, not appropriate, neutral and appropriate. And I went through and included the use categories that currently fall within the I I D um as it's listed. There's a couple of things that I've sort of simplified because again, everybody taking this is not experts in the zoning regs, so I've tried to make this as approachable as possible. The third is, says the images below depict the same development size located on the same parcel. Image one includes all of the development located within the single building. While image two separates the same development into multiple buildings, please select the development style that you feel is more appropriate. And so they're they're just gonna click on whichever one, the single building or the multi-building layout uh that they feel is more appro, most appropriate. Number four, uh the currently enacted uh temporary moratorium was adopted in response to a recent application, which if approved, could have resulted in the construction of a large-scale industrial building in excess of one million square feet. Please indicate your preference to allow a building of this size in this area of town. And again, ask them to say whether it's not appropriate, they are neutral or appropriate. Ashford's, and so I guess just to back up, um one of the main pieces of the text in them that we saw was based upon this idea of consolidating the allowable footprint on the property into a single structure. Um and so these questions sort of aim to gain sort of a visual preference and whether or not um what people think about that when they look at the the layout and then also just trying to get a perspective on overall were people feeling like the use as proposed was what was inappropriate previously? Um or if if fundamentally, as a town, Ashford just is not comfortable with a building that's that large period. Number five, uh Ashford's current regulations within the I I D limit, the maximum size of any of any one building is two hundred fifty-eight thousand square feet. Please indicate how appropriate you feel the established building cap is. So again, I'm trying to understand what they, is there concern about building cap? Is it concern about um the million square feet? Trying to get some perspective on that. And then uh as the commission considers future projects in this area, please um put the list of potential project impacts below in order from most, the most important consideration to least important consideration. And um basically, what I have here are uh grand list uh growth, traffic, potential jobs created, preservation of existing landscapes, impervious coverage slash surface drainage and water consumption. So this is really where we're trying to tease out what is sort of on the menu of things that they feel should be considered. Because grand list growth is not necessarily always equated to job creation, um water consumption versus impervious. These are somewhat different. So I tried to go through the current zoning regs for what you have as special permit considerations currently and pull some of those out. To try to again, get a better sense of of what the the town thinks you should be weighing when you are evaluating um these applications. And then I've given them an opportunity to just provide any comments specific to the I I D and given them a link to the I I D directly if they want to read the language, you know, in in more detail. So you'll probably see on the right, our estimated completion rate is just under eighty percent with a time of four minutes. So there's certainly lots of things we could ask and and we could tease this out until we're, you know, um you know, for the next twelve months, but the idea here was trying to strike a balance between gaining feedback that we could actually draw from without creating a survey that was so long or required so much time that we would lose participants. So with that, I guess I'm gonna stop my screen. We can see if anybody has any feedback.
Yeah, Mike, uh Jeff had sent out a list of questions earlier today. And it it's totally different from what you just presented.
That uh
Yeah, that that was the submission from almost kind of a preliminary submission because they were trying to get something into us from the Conservation Commission. What Mike and I did, we kind of took a look at that uh and then I was able to share it after kind of comparing the two. Uh I was able to share it with the commission members. Most of the items in that document from the Conservation Commission, I feel those questions are dealt with in a a more balanced uh approach to the general public. Uh I know, uh I think they had seven questions. They happen to have seven questions also. And in that uh items, uh rating the importance of the following issues for the I I D zone as well as rate the importance of the following features of expanding business opportunities in I I D zone. Item two of Mike's pretty much encompassed what that was in a short, concise manner for people to respond to. Then there was uh, I believe, let's see, uh item number six on theirs was rate the importance of the following issues for the I I D zone. And that is really covered by Mike's item six in again, a nice concise way that uh really limits any type of uh biased statement or presentation of it. And of course, the number seven, you know, what else would you like to tell us about the I I D zone, uh which is really kind of what Mike put in there too for an open narrative for people to put stuff in. I thought a couple of the questions from the group. I can, let me share that so you can take a look at it. So I'm not operating in a vacuum here. So So again, um the whole, the the whole write-up in the beginning, um I I'll be very, I'll be very, very honest on this. I think it's very kind of biased on this coming from the Conservation Commission. When it, you know, speaks about the nature of the land and everything like that, we're dealing with the zoning regs on here. The other thing about it is that people have to realize, everyone has to realize, town doesn't own this. You know, this is a private, a vast majority of this is a privately owned property owner that um, you know, currently has regulations that allow for commercial and industrial in there, in that area. So as I was talking about here, here's the rate, the importance, uh maintaining the current rural town atmosphere, expanded land conservation efforts, agriculture early for more farm opportunities, uh does say expanded commercial opportunities, tourism, industrial, residential recreational activities. So again, that one and number four, I'll jump down to uh rate the importance of the following features of expanding business opportunities in I I D zone. Again, I think that's covered specifically by what Mike put in with what currently is allowable activities, permitted activities in that zone. So uh and then when you get into numbers two and three, maintaining the rural town, the current rural town atmosphere isn't a function of planning and zoning at this point. I mean, uh you know, we see a lot of it and we've been told that the uh the characteristic or describing a rural characteristic in a P O C D needs to be defendable when it comes time for doing that. So a lot of these things don't fall under the planning and zoning group to decide on when it comes to the use of that land, especially in a currently regulated commercial zone uh or excuse me, the I I D zone, technology zone. And again, number three, uh expanding land conservation efforts. That's not our our bailiwick, really. That's really not what we deal with. So you can see, I think a vast majority of what Mike put in there does cover the gist of this in a, as I, as I said, a very concise and balanced way uh for dealing with it. in a, as I, as I said, a very concise and balanced way for dealing with it. I'll open it up to, I don't see a number on this. Mine doesn't number. I'll go with Mark first. Mark, you had your hand up?
Yeah, I had a couple of questions. I don't remember the question numbers, but one was just verbiage use tax base as opposed to a word like tax revenue. I'm just concerned whether or not all survey participants would necessarily understand what tax base is as opposed to saying tax revenue or revenue generated. The other was, you know, there was one question about not wanting something over a million square feet. And then our current regs with, there was a second question on, you know, current regs allowing two hundred and fifty thousand square feet. That, that leaves a gap of seven hundred and fifty thousand square feet. You know, where people might be somewhere, you know, above two fifty but below a million and we're not capturing capturing that because if they say that they don't want the two fifty, well, is that because they don't want anything even that large? Or they're fine with something larger than two fifty, but less than than a, than a million. You know, I don't think we're capturing that in-between section. Because honestly, I would answer, no, I don't think two fifty is appropriate. And I would answer, no, I don't think a million is appropriate because you know, again, I'm speaking for myself. I'm somewhere in between those two square footages.
You have a number, you have a number in mind that, yeah, between those. Anything else?
That's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Luther.
Thanks Jeff. Yeah. So my input is actually not very dissimilar to Mark's. By and large, I, I like the structure of the survey that Mike, my U M Mike have put together. I think it is well done. It's always a concern with these surveys that they can be, the questions can be written in a leading fashion, which I think is the problem with the questions we received from the Conservation Commission. They're very leading. They're a little bit skewed. And so I think the questions Mike's put together are, are good in terms of not being leading. The feedback I have is specific to question number five, where the, the survey taker is asked to indicate their comfort level with our current regs being a two hundred and fifty thousand square foot allowance where they're either comfortable, neutral or uncomfortable. And I would ask that that question, that the answer be revised to say smaller, static or larger so that it's not, are you comfortable with what is there? It's, it, it gets us more quantitative data that says I want something smaller, I want the same, or I want something larger. And then I think if somebody has the desire to indicate what larger means to them, we do have that free form box down at the bottom where that survey taker would be able to put in clarifying language about that if they wanted to and say, hey, I think we ought to go up to, you know, seven fifty or I think we ought to go up to six hundred or something of that nature. But, but I like what you've done with, with the survey by and large. So thanks.
Mike's, Mike's got ninety-nine percent of that. So I'll make sure, you know, kudos go to where it goes to. Mike, dealing with that specific question, which deals with part of what Mark said and what Luther just brought up. What do you think about that? Is there a, is there some language we can adjust on that?
I think we can probably just combine those two questions into a single question that asks that, that sort of just gets feedback to what they think a cap or what is appropriate. And we can get that range so that if people feel that two fifty is, is fine, five hundred is fine, you know, we, we can come up with some type of a ranking so that we can try to get a sense of where the, the preference is. So we'll, I can just combine both of those.
Okay, great. And is how, how does the commission feel about what Mark brought up also regarding tax base versus tax revenue? Do you think people would be more comfortable with, in their knowledge base as to what tax revenue is as opposed to tax base?
I think it's, I think tax revenue is fine.
So, and just to clarify, I have in there, it says grand list growth. I have tax base in parentheses, but because the tax revenue is a hard thing for the, for us to really know when it comes before you because we don't know what it'll be valued. We don't know a lot that's there, but we do know that a commercial development will increase the grand list. What, what the tax revenue is, I have no idea because that's dependent on so many things. So I can certainly clarify that, but I had it as grand list growth.
Okay. So if you, if you kept, I'm sorry, go ahead Janet.
I was gonna say, we don't, we can't necessarily quantify it, but that can be something that people say, yes, we want we want more. We want more tax revenue, right? That's the que- isn't that the question? Do you, do you find that, do you want, do you want that?
Mark, you had a question?
No, I, I was just gonna follow up for Janet. You know, personally, I'm not convinced that every one of our residents understands what grand list growth even means.
Yeah. So if you put tax revenue in there, people would understand that.
I mean, I think we need more common language. Cause I'm pretty confident if I asked my college students what grand list, list growth was, they wouldn't be able to tell me.
That's because they haven't been paying those.
Right. That's correct.
As opposed to the rest of us that have been paying it for years and know very well what a grand list.
No, I, I, I disagree. I think everybody knows what taxes mean, but not everybody knows what grand list means.
Why don't you explain what grand list is right in your survey? So people will know.
The, I, I think the longer you make it, the less engagement you get.
That's, that's kind of what Mike had always talked about also with.
People off really quickly if they have to read too much.
So Mike, can we, can you adjust or make a short definition in there when we're talking about the, either the grand list or what tax base is as a tax revenue?
He, he did make the adjustment there, Jeff.
Oh, I'm sorry. I didn't see. I, I, I wasn't looking closely at it. I'm sorry.
Yeah, I, I just adjusted it to say tax revenue. I mean, the other thing that I tried to do is keep this within the realm of things that you consider. So you guys, you know, would not see an application and, and decide, okay, well, this is gonna, this is gonna, you know, pay a lot of taxes. So therefore we're gonna approve it, right? So I, I wanna, I wanna pull out of this results that you can use as you evaluate. So I felt like grand list growth overall, you know, the other thing I guess I could put in there, I could put in, you know, economic development or, or, you know, or something along those lines, but I was trying to keep it within the realm of, of what you lawfully consider when an application comes before you.
Feedback, Janet, you have your hand up.
I, I was gonna talk about something else. So when we move.
Okay, Luther?
So the question I have is if the, if this Survey Monkey survey is also going to be put into print and distributed in a print version?
Yes, it's going to be available in the land use office printed.
In the land use office picked up, so not distributed?
No, we're not mailing this out. No, is it? The mailing will be in the access to online. Mike, we're not putting the survey into the citizen, right? We're putting access to it, whether you scan it or go online.
Right. So we will have the advertisement in the citizen. So folks will be able to hit the link, go to the website, we'll have a Q R code. So we'll have, we, we'll have, we can have paper copies available.
Yeah, we need, we need to definitely. We've got, we got that gist from a lot of people most recently. So and that was something I actually put out in my letter going out.
That, that was my concern is that it seemed like we had a lot of public comment of, you know, I, I think the Survey Monkey is great. Don't get me wrong. I just know that we had a lot of public comment saying that this needs to be hard copied.
Yeah, absolutely.
And, and putting them in the, the library, the town office building, the library, maybe the senior center. Now, you know, more than one place I think would be a good idea.
Well, my one concern, and this was brought up when I spoke with economic development, though I don't expect anyone to be stuffing ballot boxes on this issue, is control of those. I mean, if we do make hard copies, we should have some type of coding on the top of them that allows for that this was, you know, this was a single item taken from a for a person, someone not able to mass produce them and then, you know, just fill out a bunch of them for the same response.
Well, we, when we, when we did the housing survey, we did a code for where, where the hard copies were. So I think we'd like to wait a L for the library.
Okay. All right. All right.
You could number them and have these numbers are from the library only and these numbers from, I mean, people, people can always figure out how to
So.
cheat a little bit, but.
Janet, would it, would it be, strike a balance to, to post notice in those other buildings directing people to the land use office because then we're retaining the control. But, and I mean, they're right across the street and or right across the parking lot from each other where it's not really hard to just go across and grab one from land use. I'm just looking at ways to achieve a compromise.
Well, that's putting that, you know, that's putting one more roadblock into somebody who but yes, you could do that.
Yeah, this is a dick. I cannot seem to find where I put, raise my hand thing. So I'll kind of just jump in here with a, a question.
It's under reactions. If you click reactions, it'll show you a little thing, then you just raise your hand.
Okay, actually that, okay. But since I'm talking, let me just raise one issue. I've tried through internet searches to get an answer and have not been able to, to get a definitive answer to this question. But the party that owns this land bought it with a certain set of regulations in place. If we change those regulations, let's say to the, you know, with some of the stuff that the conservation said to make it a wildlife refuge. Does the town have any liability for, you know, downs, regulating, you know, if we change the regulations, so the property is less valuable? And I, and I'd like to get our attorney to weigh in on that.
I think we can, if I'm, we can certainly get Ken to provide feedback on that, you know, when we he will have a copy or a chance to review whatever ultimate changes the commission proposes. Generally speaking, as the non-lawyer in the room, if you make changes to a zone or that in, in a way that apply to a property which results in what they'll call a regulatory taking, which means you have, you have basically regulated the use of the property out. Or you've made it so that the only thing that's allowable is, is something that would never actually be, you know, supported there. And the town certainly would be open to the, the, the property owner suing the town and basically saying, though there are things which you've allowed on my property, there, my property is effectively useless. The term is regulatory taking. It, it happens. It doesn't happen all the time. But, you know, Ken is probably going to give you the, the same response I did until we, we can give him a list of uses to be able to say, okay, this is what's allowed now. This is what was allowed. This is what we're proposing. You know, there are any concerns here. We can certainly, we can certainly keep that in mind, you know, as we go.
I, I would like to have him in on the process sooner than, than, instead of waiting till we finish everything. You know, he, he can still weigh in at, at a later date too. But in his guidance a little bit, especially in light of some of the things that was in the land use questions that the Conservation Commission put forth. You know, a lot of those are, you know, non-land use regulatory.
But we're not considering any of those, right? Like.
No.
No, but, but the point is, within some of that, if we were to, to change the use such that it was not usable, I, I'd like to see him weigh in on that. So he has some guidance.
Well, that's, that's where, I mean, that's why I think Mike's survey is balanced along those lines. He's basically taking the information directly from our current regs, which obviously protects us and put those uses in there. And ask for people to weigh in on the appropriateness or not of those uses for that site. And then, once we have that information put together, then that's something we could potentially, if we are looking to make a change, if we're looking to take something out or take six out of eight or, you know, basically as Mike kind of said, rendering it useless to the owner, then, you know, we're gonna take that to Ken and I think with some of the guidance we just received from Mike, you know, that's, that's not in our, that's not our plan to do that. You know, we have both the current owner as well as the public's input on what they want to see done with that. But again, the area itself is owned by a private owner. And we don't want to open ourselves up. So we need to have something that you can to look at and bring up. I think Mike has already discussed the, the legal point itself as to what we can or cannot do. But it's a matter of gaining this input. If the town tells us that, to put it another way, if the town tells us to take out six out of those eight uses, it's, it's probably not something we're going to do as a commission. But it's something that we can run by Ken before we do anything with our regs.
Okay, a- as long as he's had a chance to, to weigh in.
Absolutely, absolutely. Any changes we make, obviously he would be, and if we needed, if we need that input, you know, as to what we're doing there, we'll gain that from him. Absolutely. Janet?
Oh, I had one, well, one comment on number six. Based on comments that we got during the hearings, a lot of people mentioned the importance of night sky. And I think that might be added. See how many other, how many people are interested in them.
So I will, I'll say I actually had that in there. But I thought of, I sort of thought to myself, well, that's, it's that's more of an engineering solution. You guys can require that all, that the, that the project be dark sky compliant. And so I thought, well, everybody will include that as something that's important. And so I pulled it out because to me, that's something you guys can require. Whereas the other things are a bit more of a sliding scale based upon the type of development or the size of the development. I'm happy to put it back in there, but that's kind of what my thought process was.
Well, I, I didn't want it to be. What do I want? Not ignored, but not considered important when we're discussing the regulations. So I, I don't know how, whether.
That would probably, that would probably fall along the lines of, you know, preserving dark skies, noise. You know, a number of the things that we would need to consider that we have not really considered in the past for that area. Should there be commercial development in there? So yeah, dark skies, noise, traffic, you know, all of those issues.
Yeah, if you, if you go into the regulations, there is a section that talks about light and dark skies and all of that. It doesn't need to be in this specific zone. Cause it's already.
I think, I think if you look at Cumberland Farms, I'm not sure that we did such a great job with night skies. So just pointing that out. I'm, I'm actually not finished talking. Also, the Conservation Commission is not saying that we want this to be you know, left wild because we recognize that it is privately owned. I think what we're, and I can't speak for all the members of it, but I think what we're trying to say is maybe you should look at, you know, at, at more usage, more uses. And perhaps if, if the regulations reflected that, maybe some other people would come in looking at the property to, to use it. So I don't, I don't want you to think that, that the commission was just thinking we should regulate out everything. It's just how. It's just how, how do we regulate it so that it works, it works for the town?
Well, I mean, when you look at some of the things that like uh, for, for number four of the questions from the CCC, um, tourism. Tourism isn't a use. Tourism is a uh, uh, an adjective. It's a descriptor of a overall. What's the word I'm looking for? Um.
Like an activity.
Activity, business climate or something like this, a funk, but it's not a function, a hotel motel next to it. That is a function.
Right.
Uh, and allow, and allowable use, if you will. I mean, tourism is not a use, whereas hotel motel is. So. Yeah, things would be, things would need to be specific to that when it came to some of the descriptors in here. So.
Al- also because I, I, I want to just mention this really, really briefly. I'm sorry, Janet, I don't mean to step on you, but it's just in the context of the um. The Conservation Commission uh, language. I want to encourage everybody to um. Not embrace the language regarding industrial agriculture. That, that's kind of a misnomer. There's no such thing. As industrial agriculture. It's either just agriculture or it's not agriculture. It's, it's often used to portray larger farms, but it's, it's not a, 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 a. Phrase that the Ag Commission or people that are involved in agriculture would really support.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We um, we, we did this at a special meeting very quickly, so it, it is a draft and. Um, just to let you know that.
So, uh. In order to get this into the citizen, to get our first blush, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead, Dick.
Yeah, uh, so we're all operating off the same page. Uh, Mike, if you could send your latest copy out to everybody. And so we know that's the copy that you're working with.
Yeah, and you would have up until what, close of business tomorrow, um. Mike, to make any comments or anything for the changes, because we need, we just need to get it in for Wednesday?
Right, yeah, I've got to have, the deadline is Wednesday, so I've got to have everything wrapped up finalized tomorrow.
Okay, so if you make those changes and send those out to us, uh, if, so anyone can comment on the changes that you made, um, that would be great.
So I'll try to print and send it. I can't really share like I'm showing you with the whole commission, because the way that Survey Monkey works, I can. I can try to do it as a PDF and people can just send me back their comments.
Yeah, that would be fine.
So, how's that, how's that going to work? If Mike gets. All these comments. Are we leaving it up to him to reconcile them or?
Well, he's, he's already made a couple of the changes here, because what we're talking about here is how he's going to um quantify. The square footage uh question, allowing people um to indicate that and as well as putting that into the narrative, should they wish. And then the tax revenue uh versus tax base uh language. Was there anything else that was uh? Questioned by the commission?
Not that I know of. I'm just wondering what would happen if somebody comes up with something and.
Well, I would say, I would say, um, if you're sending your comments, please send your comments to um, myself, to Mike. And to my, uh, Mark and Janet for the Executive Committee, uh, in order to um, be sure that uh. And we can always talk with the individual, uh, if it's something more so, so specific that we can't really grasp what the change is or what the comment is. Luther.
I mean, I'm, I'm just wondering, you know, I think you just did this, but I mean, if, does anybody have any other? Input or were those the only two things? Because if those were the only two changes, Mike's made one of them already that we, we got to watch. So really just be the square foot question that we would be providing feedback for, because we've all just seen the whole thing. Right?
Right, right. Those are the seven questions.
Review of.
Well, okay, I was just, I, 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 I was just clarifying because sometimes. You know, you look at something and then you think about it and the next day you think, oh my goodness, I didn't like that. So. I just wanted to clarify what the procedures were if somebody did come up with um, a, a, a problem with it.
So again, what's, what's good about this is it's not a vote, it's not a binding, you know, for what we're putting out there. So if the information we come back is skewed in any way. Or we get input that, you know, people didn't understand something, uh, that's also input for us to work with too. For potentially even a future survey, uh, if we get other input from other groups. Um, Mike, are you good with that?
Yeah, so the other thing that I did is for the ranking. I changed the, the fourth option to preservation of existing landscapes, dark skies, natural resources, et cetera. So that covers, I think, sort of the initial intent of what was there. And then I added one at the bottom. I hadn't saved it before, but uh, this last one, potential services to and for residents. So this is. You know, the idea of, of certain businesses act, you know, obviously provide things directly to residents, whereas other businesses. Either operate internally or, or provide things on a regional or statewide scale. Um, so, other than that, it would just be changing the five and six to a. A, a single question that allows them to give us feedback on what they feel is appropriate as far as building size. Um. So that would be the only other one that, that I would just need to change.
And I'm, I'm comfortable with that. I don't know how the other members feel. Is there a, um, are we, are we comfortable with Mike moving forward on that? And if not, please speak up. I see a thumb up. Okay, Mike, I think you can move forward with that. Um, but if you do, uh, once you do make the change, if you could just send it out for us to take a look at.
Yeah, I will make that change in the morning and uh, send it.
Very good. We also received a submission from Kristen Smith, uh, and that was uh, through uh. Dick Williams who forwarded it on and went to him due to uh, economic development and his email there. Um, a lot of what she uh. Had indicated in her correspondence really was narrative, and it was really regarding pretty much what we just talked about, you know, services. Uh, you know, um, the potential for providing uh, businesses that provide services to the local Astrid Group, uh, traffic. Um, uh, I can't remember if uh, light pollution was in there, but again, a number of the same items that we've heard. A lot with that have been dealt with um, from uh, you know, what the Conservation Commission brought up here as well as. Again, you know, Mike's indication is more of a planning and zoning standpoint as opposed to, you know, dealing with the P O C D going forward. And the nature of that area. But this will allow us to make some moves on the regs once we get the input in, but I did want to make sure that Kristen's input was. Uh, reviewed and taken into account. Okay, um, going on to two eighty-five Turnpike Road, uh, request for a ninety day extension. Mike, you want to give a little background on that?
Yes, uh, so you um, already issued a single extension. Um, and as I indicated, or they indicated to me previously, um, they're just trying to work with their bank on some stuff and, and. Obviously with, it's a little bit different. If you get a special permit, you can file it on the land records and have a special permit to do something and never actually do it. And doesn't bother anybody. With a subdivision, once you file that subdivision on the land records, it's, you've, you've now created that lot. So they, they want to be careful that they don't pull that trigger until they have everything squared away. So this is just an extension to give them some more time before they have to. Make a decision on whether or not they need to file it. If they miss the, if they don't, um, then they'd have to come back to you for a, a new approval. So this is the last extension that by statute you can provide.
I was just gonna ask if we had any uh, limitations on that, so.
You're limited to two hundred and seventy days total.
Thank you. Any discussion from questions from the uh, board? Is there a motion to approve the request for a ninety day extension for the bond? Sherry, is there a second?
A second, Janet.
Janet seconds. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed? Abstentions? Bill moved. Thank you. Okay, um, the last item under new business is the approval of the two thousand twenty-four meeting calendar. We need to uh. Submit something. We don't need to submit it till January, but as Sherry Much in her email that went out, the town clerk. Uh, indicated, things get busy and crazy in December and uh, didn't want to have to put pressure on us come January. So it's, uh, she puts the request out early. For us to look at our calendar and um, thank you, Mike. Uh. There's two things. One is the meeting dates themselves, which are accurate. I went over, Alex put this together. And I went over the dates, uh, as you can see, the October is the only one that uh, corresponds to the holiday, the uh. Um, Columbus Day holiday, so it uh, becomes a Tuesday meeting. Everything else checks out date wise. The further discussion on this really is how we, because we need to indicate how we're held, holding our meetings. This is what I put in after talking with Mike about the uh, regulations and the requirements. Um, all meetings to be held virtually by Zoom or other provider is indicated on an agenda for each meeting, unless otherwise warned by posted agenda. So. I've been going over some of the pros and cons. I know some of the members have been talking about, when are we going to get back to in-person meetings? Um, and again, there are pros and cons to each of those. Um. One of the, and what we'd really like to, or what I'd really like to go to, I think, is hybrid meetings. Where we allow uh, uh, the members of the committee as well as public to come into a room. Uh, as well as having it uh, virtually attended by those who either don't have access, don't have the ability. Uh, again, the pros of virtual hybrid, the flexibility of schedules, um, you can uh, take the meeting from anywhere. Uh, the increased accessibility of the general populace be able to attend. I mean, we would have been very hard pressed to come up with two hundred and sixty, a space for two hundred and sixty-three spots for one of our hearings. Uh, even then, a hundred and fifty and such. And some of that has to do with, we don't know sometimes what it's going to be. We have some issues, we have a hearing and we think that, you know, we're going to need all these seats or all these people and they, you know, are online and no one shows up. And then other hearing, it's pretty well attended because it's a hot button issue for a number of people. And I think we have an idea of. Some of those hot button issues, but we don't know what the attendance is going to be and what we need to deal with. That's why the virtual gives you uh, more flexibility. To the accessibility of that. Also weather, uh, barring uh, the electricity going out. Uh, weather doesn't affect the holding of the meeting or the attending of the meeting, as long as you have that virtual option. Uh, it's not an issue. Um. The problem we have is the hybrid has not been rolled out, if you will. We have, Mike, we have the technology, correct?
We have uh. Part of, or, or some of the technology.
Oh, okay, I thought we, I, I thought we had what we needed to do. We're still, we still don't have the technology in place.
We have the technology to, to run hybrid meetings like you've seen some of the other boards, but this board is different in that. At, attendees and applicants and others, we sort of need it to be a two-way street. We need people up that are virtual to be able to see. Hear and watch. And the way we've got with just the owl, it would be next to impossible for somebody virtually. To really see, for example, a site plan that somebody was presenting in the room. Um, and so we don't, we don't have a setup that really allows us to be seamless between the in-person portion and the, and the online portion. And, and the requirement is that if we're gonna have that, it needs to be seamless so that people attending virtually are not. Given, they have just as, the same opportunities as people in the room as far as seeing, hearing and, and speaking.
So just as, as a single instance on a, on an example like that, so if someone was presenting a site plan to us. We would need to have it set up so that um, whether it's an operator or whether it's one of the uh. Elected officials operating a um, laptop to allow, to bring up and share the screen. So people could see what was being presented, right? Whether it was a, a site plan or whatever.
Yes, and the, so the, the owl that we have now, it really can only pick up movement and sound within a six-foot. Radius of the mic. And this commission being so, so much larger than the Board of Selectmen, to have everybody seated around that table. And have members speaking, members of the public and having someone presenting a site plan, for example, or if they're not within six feet of that mic. People that are online are not going to hear it. Um, and so we need, part of that discussion was making sure we had the technology. So that all that audio was picked up, because for public hearings, we're required obviously to maintain the recording. It's a little bit more complicated than. For example, Board of Selectmen. Um, and the owl just doesn't have that capability.
It, uh, so the owl, we don't have the technology to record that, that meeting that takes place?
We do, but if you're, if everybody and everything is not happening right on top of that owl, it's just not going to pick it up, because. We're, we're so much more involved in, in these meetings than what the Board of Selectmen might be or another smaller board. So it would work if we were all sitting there around the table together, but to have somebody at the, the lectern, speaking to the commission. Or to have somebody presenting a site plan, or to have somebody on the other end of the table trying to speak, if they're not within, within five to six feet of that mic. It, it just is not uh, adequate. Which is, you know, based upon some of the feedback we've had from some of the meetings I've helped other boards run. It, it's just not. It's not easy to follow all of that along.
So I guess my question could, or a couple of my questions that continue to follow up, and if I'm stumping on anybody who wants to ask a question, please, you know, uh, let me know. Um. Is there? Accessory technology to what we have now that would allow us to have an appropriate meeting? I mean, are other towns uh. Strangled by this also?
So, yes, there's, there's certainly, all that technology exists. I've met with the town's IT consultant a, a few times. I've reviewed the list of technology improvements that they have recommended and, and given them some feedback. So I think what we need to do. What needs to be done, what needs to be purchased, it's all there. Um, it's just a matter of. The town basically purchasing it and asking the, those IT folks to, to put it in, but we sort of know what the answer is. We just. The town just has to basically buy it and, and they'll install it.
Alright, so, um, would a letter from our commission help for that to the uh, Board of Finance, Board of Selectmen?
You might know that better than I would.
It can't hurt. Um, so. What, what I've been thinking about is I would like to get to the virtual status so that, uh, again, we can come together uh, as a group, but still allow. Access and flexibility. Um, so what I'm thinking about is using that language that I had posted on the um. Schedule, but uh, and keep it that way, obviously for the bad weather coming December, January, February. And maybe March and April will have a uh, I use it, I was never in the military, but I'm calling it a shooting solution. Uh, for doing uh, the hybrid meetings, having the technology, having the training, having maybe some practical experience. Under our belts too, in uh, using it. Um, and we can then warn our meetings appropriately like that. As indicated at that header, um, that it will be held uh, hybrid, uh, both in person at the uh. Uh, when we warn it with the agenda that way. Thoughts? Better input?
I think the language that you have in the uh, meeting schedule is fine.
Okay. Anything else? Janet, you're muted.
I think that's a good plan, Jeff.
Okay.
Yeah, and I, I definitely don't want to go to hybrid meetings unless they can be seamless and. Everybody can hear us, because I've been to some that have been just horrible.
And as Mike and I were talking about too, that there would be um, appropriate backup for, you know, if a person, if one of the, the chair can't make it. Then the vice chair. then the vice chair, whoever, you know, we have someone as a backup to make sure they know how to run this and work with it. And, you know, what goes on in holding the hybrid meeting. So there'd be some training in there to work with also. So, uh, hearing and seeing, no other input or hands or anything, uh, is there a motion to approve the schedule for two thousand twenty-four?
Still moved.
Richard, is there a second?
Second.
I'm sorry, who seconded?
Jerry.
Jerry, thank you, Jerry. Uh, all those in favor of accepting the uh, meeting schedule for January twenty-fourth to be submitted to the town clerk? Say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Abstentions? Still moved? Thank you. Okay, uh, Mike, zoning officer report.
Uh, so I can uh, just give you a quick update on Lakewood's lane. So, uh, we talked about that a couple of months ago. We've been working through that with the applicant and and in town hall. So we basically, um, because there was a bit bit of a gap between what the town's initial perspective was on the work that was outstanding and what the applicant's uh, consultant or or contractors, if you will, uh, had stated. Um, and we don't really have a lot of really good documentation from way back when some of that work was done. We ultimately brought in a third-party uh, engineer, uh, which is going to be paid for by the applicant to do an inspection of the roadway. We had um, core sampling done of the base. Um, and the, we're currently waiting on the results of a Civ analysis. That will give us the ability to really know the adequacy of the construction to date. So we can back into the scope of work to get the rest of the project done. And the town will know when we accept the road that it's completed per our public improvement specs. And the applicant will know that we're not making him do work that isn't necessary. So we should have that in the next week or so, and then we can get the scope of work finalized. They'll be able to then provide the bond and then things can move forward. So it's been a little bit complicated, but I think we've we've got a a a plan in place.
Uh, Mike, not to put you on the spot, but could you give a thirty or forty-five second update for uh, Tom and Steve as to when we talk about Lakewood's? What we're, what we're talking about, what went on to uh, bring us to this point?
Sure, uh, the application um, was approved, uh, gosh, probably fifteen years ago or so for a sub, the subdivision with the roadway. Many of the lots were constructed, the binder course was was installed, but the top coat on the road was never completed. Um, they bonded for the top coat and um, when going through some bonds, I I sort of realized that it had expired. And after digging in a little bit further, uh, we found that the um, bond actually expired. And because the bank had been, I think it was originally United Bank, which then became Peoples, which is now M and T. When the bank, bank was purchased, the funds were sent back to the applicant. So the bond expired and and the the town actually didn't have any money. Um, so I filed what what is known as a notice of expiration on the land records to basically lock the subdivision in time and not, and and prevent them from being able to sell the remaining lots so that we could figure out what needed to be done. They resubmitted their subdivision application, which was approved by the commission this summer with the condition that they provide an adequate bond. So we're going through this process now to determine exactly what work is remaining. So that when we get a bond, we're all comfortable that it's for no more or no less than the work that's um, outstanding. There are maybe five or six lots that have yet to be transferred. They're still in the, in ownership of of the developer or the the now owner. So once we get the bond, we'll, we'll rescind that expiration notice and they'll be able to sell those lots to the people that are waiting to close.
And I think, and I think you had said our NICOG engineer was in the six hundred thousand dollar realm and they were in the two hundred. Is that right?
The original scope of work that was done by, yeah, um, by NICOG was like around seven hundred and fifty thousand, which basically involves pulling everything out and and almost starting from scratch. And, you know, their initial, their initial plan was to just come in and do a quick um, overlay of the existing binder. So we decided to have the testing done by a certified lab so that we would have no questions and and the, you know, sort of a third-party independent analysis of the project. So that way there, it's it's sort of non, non-biased. We don't want them to construct the auto bond because that's not how the the process works. But we also don't want to accept a road that's going to fail in in five or ten years. Um, this is planned to be a public road, so for the Board of Selectmen uh, to adopt it, we need to know that it meets all of our standards and it's going to last. So uh, yeah, it's it's hoping to come right down the middle.
Somewhere in the middle is the truth. Okay, very good. Anything else?
I guess I, I just would note, so we didn't have enough time between last meeting and this meeting with the required waiting. But for December, we'll be having the public hearing for the revisions that we reviewed last month related to child uh, daycare homes and family daycare homes, which is a requirement. Minor tweaks we looked at, so that's all scheduled. It's been referred to to CROG and to NICOG. Um, we just didn't have the time, so that'll be on the December agenda for public hearing.
Did we have a date in December? Not December first, but was there a date in December we needed to get back to the state?
We just have to certify by December first what the town's plan is, either we're in compliance.
Okay.
Yes.
Yep, and our dates on that as to what we expect. Okay, it's expect, okay. Anything else?
Just a, go ahead, Dick. A quick question, uh, I I noticed there's quite a bit of activity at the midway. Mike, you may or may not know the answer to this, but uh, is the applicant that's doing that work, George and Peter?
Charging Peter?
Yeah, those are the previous owners of the, of the midway.
Oh, I, I have absolutely no idea.
Okay. Because the, it it seems like someone in in earnest trying to uh, refurbish the place to put it back on the market.
Yeah, I I know they've been working with the building department. I know they've submitted plans. We've met with architects and we, you know, a bunch of those guys, they've been dealing with the health department. So they've come in and and that's, it's been quite a process because the trusses showed up before, you know, the permits were finalized. I think their architect was originally from another state and wasn't familiar with the Connecticut State Building Code. So it's been complicated getting everything across the finish line. But I don't know exactly what the, you know, nuances are of of who's involved in the project.
Okay, thanks, Mike.
Mark?
Oh, gotta unmute myself. I I just want a clarification on, on our meeting requirements. Because reading the law, it says the, the law pervert, preserves local discretion on whether to conduct a meeting in person or remotely. The law does not require a board to provide to the public remote access to meetings. It it only requires that board members have remote access, not the public. So I'm not sure why we can't return to in-person meeting due to technology. Because we we only need to, we we only need to have access to the board member, not not the entire public, you know, as far as what the law requires.
Right, but what we're finding is that, or what, I mean, at least my output, my outlook on it is that, um, both the, if we go to in-person, we're not recording anymore. We have no method of recording it, so we don't have, we get many, many, many views on the uh, Planning and Zoning Commission meetings uh, from folks who are able to review it and go back and go through it. And it captures a number of items that minutes do not capture. We actually used to record uh, on a CD, uh, DVD player, excuse me, a DVD player that broke down uh, shortly before COVID. And we never uh, got that repaired or fixed or anything. So the recording for the litigious nature of what we do. Um, the other is, again, the accessibility, the number of people able to attend uh, who don't, you know, don't have kids to take care of or, you know, a second job or whatever like this, they're at least able to go online and be part of that meeting. Uh, I think it's, for me, it's very important to have the, have it, uh, what's it, uh, government in the sunshine, making sure everyone who wants to attend or everyone who wants to be part of the process available to do so. And that's one thing that uh, virtual attendance has done for us. So again, it's made it some more uh, with the flexibility as well as the accessibility. Um, that's why having ver, uh, hybrid meetings of being people to have that interaction, not be on video, have do better, you know, with a face-to-face situation, they can do that, but still allowing uh, access by the public.
No, and I understand that, but I I guess the impression that I was given tonight and in previous meetings is that we weren't able to have in-person meetings unless we could give, you know, remote access, and that's not true.
That did change. That was one of the old executive orders uh, that went under COVID and that did change. I'm trying to think, Mike, do you remember when that changed?
April twenty-eighth of twenty-two.
Okay, so, thank you.
Yeah.
So, yeah, that was the executive order during COVID and then, you know, we've carried over to, you know, this time now.
I just want to make sure that the board understands that, that we can choose to have in-person meetings. We just have to be able to give remote access to a board member that requests it, not to the general public. I just want to make sure everyone knows that we're.
Mark, excuse me, aren't, aren't hearings, aren't we required for a hearing to have access to the public?
No, not if we choose to have an in-person meeting. We do not have to grant remote access.
If a, if a public member requests it, don't you have to do that?
Only the board.
Not anymore.
Okay.
You have to provide in, in-person accommodation for the public if it's virtual only. And you have to provide virtual accommodation for the commission if it's in-person only.
Correct.
But not for the public?
No.
The bigger challenge is, and this has happened in several places that I've been where you you have an in-person meeting and it's scheduled as that, public hearing is set as that, and then somebody's, you know, on a work trip or there's a weather issue or there's a childcare issue and a member of the commission that you need for a quorum, for example, or who wants to attend or et cetera, wants to attend virtually. And you're sort of setting it up as an in-person only meeting, but then you provide this virtual accommodation last minute. It's best to know the format of the meeting when you schedule the legal notice because we provide the format when we run that in the newspaper. Um, so just for consistency's sake, um, yeah, but yeah, you could have an in-person only if it was a public hearing, you'd have to record it. And we would have to, you know, basically do it as it was done a couple of years ago on a, on a tape recorder or whatever.
Just on a personal basis, uh, I'm going through a whole bunch of issues with my back again. And I am pretty sure I could not attend a in-person meeting.
Right, but the 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 law requires us to allow you to attend virtually, but not the public.
Right, but if we set up for virtual for him, why don't we set up for the public anyways?
Well, well, Mike was 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 saying about, you know, as far as accommodating everyone speaking, including the public.
I'll, I'll go back to the wording that Jeff put on the initial announcement and say that we go with that.
I I I just want to make sure everyone understands what what we're allowed to do, because that, that wasn't the impression I've been given, you know, over the last six months, and that's why I read the law.
Yeah, and that, and that, as you said, as you saw in April, that did change. Um, I I was under the same, I was under the same thought process up until probably a month ago or so that uh, we needed, we were required to do that and we're not.
Right.
Okay. Thank you. Anything else from Mike?
I'm good.
From the commission members?
Motion to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
Second from Jerry. Thank you again. Thank you all. Um, we're forward to seeing you in December. Hopefully it'll be as clear and warm as it has been in November up till now. Um, take care, everyone.
Thank you.